So the red button is the end button.
So we're good to go. All right, good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of May 8th. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I would like to signify the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Hopkins, could you take role, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Voight?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins here. Chairperson Fox?
Here.
And absent our Commissioner Newsom and Commissioner Mitchell. We also have President, Township Plan Director Dave Campbell.
All right, next up, item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
I make a motion to approve our meeting agenda for May 8th, 2014.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Grissom, a second from Commissioner Murphy. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay motion carries. We have no meeting minutes to approve. We have no... Oh, we do have a call to the public. If you are here this evening for the agenda item on the Safer Roads and Pathways, there's going to be plenty of opportunity to ask questions and talk during that time. So if there's anybody that has a question or would like to make any statements on any topic other than the road plan, now would be the time to step forward. Thought that's why you were here. All right, we'll close, call to the public. We have no public hearing, so we'll move to item 8A, which is our Town Hall meeting on the Safer Roads and Pathways Plan. I think the best thing to do here is turn the meeting over to our Planning Director. He can explain to you how he plans on going through this agenda item and give it to you, Dave.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, good evening, everybody. I've been here almost two years and this is by far the most people I've ever seen in this room. So I hope that's a good sign. Couple of housekeeping things. What you see up on the screen is a one-page summary of the Safer Roads and Pathways Plan and there's some black and white versions over there on that table. I know a lot of you picked one up on the way in. If you didn't and you want one, there's still some there and if we need more, we'll run out and print some more. This meeting this evening as part of a Planning Commission meeting is one of several Town Hall meetings that the township is holding to solicit as much public input as we can on the Safer Roads and Pathways Plan. We want to get all this input from Town Hall meetings such as this, we're having Town Hall meetings at the Senior Center, at some of our coffee shops, we're going to homeowners' association meetings, and we want to take all that input and take it back to our citizen task force that developed this plan. Our next meeting of that task force is going to be in early June and we as a staff want to come back to that task force and tell them what we're hearing in forums such as this so that they can develop the best road and pathway plan that they possibly can so that that's the plan that will ultimately go to the voters in November 2014 for a millage proposal. There are some members of our task force here this evening. I know Glenn Harper's here, Gary Corneo, Mrs. Krieger's here, and if I'm missing any others, forgive me. At least one hand in the back, I don't, I can't recognize who it is. So those task force members were volunteers, they're residents of Heartland Township just like all of us, who volunteered their time to develop this plan over a series of meetings and a lot of healthy debates and good conversations. They want to see these roads in our township fixed as much as all of us do and so whether we... If you have better ideas, just keep in mind that this task force really put a lot of time and effort into this plan and we'll talk more about that. I want to make clear that the plan that we present, that I present to you today is by no means final. As I mentioned, it's going to come back to the task force in June. We're going to do some more public input after that. So please do not take what I present to you tonight as being this is the final plan, love it or leave it kind of a thing. We want to hear what you have to say about it. I'm here to educate as best I can on the plan. I'm here to listen, I'm here to answer your questions, I'm here to explain as best I can. The role of the Heartland Township staff is not to advocate for this plan. We just want to make sure that our voters have as much information as they possibly can on it when they go to the polls in November. So a little background on how we got to this plan. The Heartland Township sent out a survey in late 2012 to 1,500 registered voters in the township. Of those 1,500 surveys that went out, we got 750 back, which is an excellent response rate for anyone who's ever done polling or surveys in their time. And what we heard from the residents who returned their surveys was that they consider fixing and maintaining Heartland Township's road and pathways one of their top priorities. So the township took that as our signal to look at how do we go about funding these road improvements. Everybody in Township Hall and in our board and our Planning Commission probably agree that the roads in Heartland Township are in very poor shape and they're only getting What we hope that everyone understands, though, is that there is no such thing as a township road. All public roads in Heartland Township are either under the jurisdiction of the state of Michigan, the Michigan Department of Transportation, or the Livingston County Road Commission. And those are the agencies that get the road funding. Heartland Township doesn't get a dime for maintaining the public roads in Heartland The unfortunate reality is that the road funding mechanism in the state of Michigan is broken. The road funding comes from two primary sources. The gas tax, which is a flat 19 cents per gallon, so regardless of whether a tank or a gallon of gas is $4 a gallon or $2 a gallon, you're still only paying that 19 cents. You're not paying a percentage of that. The other source of funding for road maintenance is the vehicle registration fees that we all pay. Those go to the state of Michigan, the gas tax and the vehicle registration, and then those funds collectively are redistributed out to the county road commissions based on a number of factors, including population and road miles, and there's a formula that the state has for that. Livingston County receives approximately $70 million per year in road funding. And while that sounds like a big number, it's not nearly enough for them to do what they need to do on the roads in Livingston County. So as much as the road commission gets a lot of grief from all of us about the condition of the roads, the fact is they can't do what they need to do with the amount of money they have. The funding just isn't there. So part of the message in the township developing this plan is that there's no rescue in sight from the state of Michigan or from Livingston County to come in and do what needs to be done to fix these roads. And what the township is asking the voters is, if we're going to get these roads fixed, we need to do it ourselves, we need to come up with our own source of funding to get these roads fixed. The township asked the same question of the voters in 2010 and that millage failed. The... In the meantime, in the last four years, the roads didn't get any better, obviously. So we as a township took a different approach with this proposal this year. We wanted to solicit much more public engagement like we're doing here tonight. This is one of many. The plan was developed not in a vacuum by the township staff and the township planner and the township engineer, it was developed by a citizen task force. People who live here, pay their taxes, and that task force was made up of residents who we purposely tried to get as many residents as we could from different areas of the township, different backgrounds. We had engineers, we had stay-at-home moms, and just everyone who drives these roads and is as concerned as all of us with the condition of those roads. And those are the folks who developed this plan. The first meeting of that task force was in November of 2013. There's been several meetings since. There was a lot of healthy debate at those meetings, a lot of tough decisions had to be made, whether to fund this road or that road. And where we came down to after all those meetings was the road and pathway plan that this one sheet summarizes. The road and pathway plan in its entirety is available on the township's website at So you can read the entire plan on that website. The plan is 20-something pages long and to print it in full color gets a little expensive so we couldn't print out copies for everybody who would come here tonight, but you're more than welcome to go on the website and read the current version of the draft of that plan. But where the task force came out is to recommend that the township asked the voters in November of 2014 for one and a half mills over a term of 10 years. Those one and a half mills would equate to approximately $9 million over that 10-year period, about $900,000 a year, total of 10 years. The average taxable value for a home in Heartland Township is $100,000, so the average homeowner would be asked to pay $150 per year for 10 years to fix the roads in Heartland Township. The road projects that were included in the Safer Roads and Pathway Plan include fixing gravel roads, fixing paved roads. There's one project that is paving an existing gravel road. There's new pathways, and then there's better maintenance for the roads, for paved gravel and pathways, including better ditching and putting better crowns on the road, better road chloriding on the gravel roads. So the idea there is that we don't just want to fix the roads, we also want to have funding in place to maintain them once we fix them. There's no point in fixing them and then letting them just fall back into disrepair. So tonight, the idea is that everyone in this room has an opportunity to come up and be heard. And whether it's a question, I'll do my best to answer questions, whether it's just a comment, myself and Colleen, our communications director, will be taking notes as feverishly as we can because I can't say it enough, we want to take this input back to our citizen task force at the beginning of next month. What we are asking so that everybody in the audience can hear the question that someone might have is we are asking that you come up to the podium and use the microphone so that everybody can hear the question. There's nothing more frustrating than hearing an answer without knowing what the question was. If anyone's not able to make their way up to the podium, that microphone is wireless so we can take it to you if necessary. We ask that, you know, people, one at a time, take a turn. We ask that everybody have their first turn before anybody has their second turn. And again, we're here to listen. Where else can I have an opportunity for the Planning Commission to ask questions after you folks have had your opportunity as well? I'll repeat it for anybody who came in late, there are still the one-sheeters available over here. And I will keep repeating the website, which is heartlandroads.com. There's a lot of great information on there, more than I can probably provide for you this evening. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you and we can go from there.
All right, Dave. If anybody has a question or comment, as our planner said, if you would mind step up to the podium and ask, and I think for the most part, Dave, maybe Colleen are going to assist in giving the answers because I'm not sure that we know too many of the answers.
Can I make one more statement before we get started? I was also a member of the committee and I volunteered for sure because it was one of the first things I was interested in when I got involved in the community, but I just wanted to reiterate Dave's portion of his statements there, that there was many... All the people on the committee were residents. Some were new residents, some were long-term residents. There's residents from every corner of the township. And with those residents, we had the opportunity to have... Our undersheriff was involved, a member of the fire department was involved, the Heartland Schools was invited, and we thought we were going to get somebody from the bus garage, he didn't show up. So there was a member of the township engineering firm was also there on the committee, and planning commission members and board members. So I just wanted everybody to understand where the group of people that formed the task force came from, to show that there wasn't concentrated areas in the township that we were looking at or a certain group of people that we were inviting. So it was really well represented, I thought, for the whole township, and different levels of expertise, different levels of travel throughout the township, different needs of the roads. So I just wanted to add that so that everybody would understand where the task force came from and how it was developed.
All right, thank you, Keith. Why don't we try this, just help yourself coming up one at a time, free-flowing, ask your questions and we'll... If we can get through it that way, we won't have to call people up and raise hands and all that. So if that works, let's go for it.
Hi. I have to say I was really thrilled when I saw the plans. I'm a condo owner off Heartland Road and I wanted to be sure I understood the plan, that there is the sidewalk sort of by, that ends where the beginning of the first set of condos. And so I'm making sure that when we talk about pathways, you're talking about extending the sidewalk along Heartland Road to Dunham Road. Is that right?
That's correct. We're looking to... So right now, the sidewalk pathway, whichever you want to call it, dead ends where that commercial development ends, right? Right at the property line where Meyer and all the other commercial development is. The idea is that we would make that connection from where it dead ends right now northward up to Dunham Road.
That's excellent. I'm really excited because I walk that route all the time to go to the village library. I've almost been hit twice by cars and actually even bike riding, and I think it's a great idea, so I really commend that and thank you for that. Thank you.
Dave?
Can I interrupt for a moment? Do we have the map showing where those sidewalks and where the roads are?
We do. And I mean, for those of you who can see it way over there, it is over there on the boards and we do have it. Bear with me. These are the existing and proposed pathways and a little bit further into the plan, these are the proposed road projects. So whoever's interested, we can go back and forth between those two if there's specific questions on which projects are which.
Hi, thank you for taking input from citizens. My name is Bob Fox, I live in Heartland Township. I've been here about 15 years. And as a matter of fact, Colleen, I talked to you this afternoon. My schedule changed, thank you for your patience with me. So, you know, you said a key word, David, you used the word "broken." And, you know, I'm not opposed to paying taxes, but I think, or increase a mill, but I think we have to explore everything else first. And here's some things that I see. Right now, Michigan allows the highest load weightings on trucks in all the states. Now, they do that by adding another axle, which they say distributes the weight better. But if that's true, why do the other states not allow the heavy load rating? So if we're going to fix the roads, don't we want to consider these heavy trucks going down the roads that are going to be tearing them up after we fix them? Now, right now, Bulger's got a plan and he's doubling the fees on heavy trucks from $50 to $100 and $100 to $200 respectively. But that's not going to get it. He's really missed the whole problem, which is the trucks going down the roads weigh too much and they need to change that law. The other thing is, this is a great sheet, but, and I'm coming in this late, I apologize, but I sure would like to see an evaluation of other revenue sources before we start talking about a 1.5-mill increase. You know, I don't know if Livingston County gets back for dollar for dollar for everything we pay in gas tax and vehicle registration. If we don't, maybe we need to start advocating so we get that back. So I'm interested in any comments you might have, Dave, or...
So as far as the axle weight issue, it certainly is an issue and it's certainly an issue in Heartland Township, but it is a state law issue and it might, a little bit out of our...
But see, that's the problem. You can't...
Sure.
You can't beat tunnel vision. If you're going to make me pay more for a road that a trucker can go down and tear up, let's get that fixed first and then talk to me about fixing the roads.
Sure. And the second point, help me out again, the...
You said the system was broken.
Yes.
And I think you're...
Yeah. So the counties in general, Livingston County included, only get 30-something percent of that...
Revenue pay-in?
Yeah, between the gas tax and the vehicle registration, my understanding 37% goes to county roads and the rest of it goes to the state highway system, the expressways.
So the question...
That's not exactly correct. Part of that money goes to the schools as well.
Of the road funding percentage breakdown, let's put it that way.
The 19 cents, though.
Right.
Okay, but for the roads, we're only getting about a third back, that's what I'm hearing you say.
The counties are.
So is that an advocacy item? We need to go back to the road commission to say, change your formula or whatever?
Well, it wouldn't be the road commission, it would be our state legislators.
Okay. I think we have to look at the bigger picture and maybe the planning... You know, I apologize. I'm sure the Planning Commission had a lot of conversations on this stuff. I'm coming in this late, I apologize for that, but they're questions that I have and I'd like to have conversation. I'm not here... I would like to see a sheet on other revenue sources and some kind of assessment on the percentage or the chances of us getting it, and what steps do we have to go through to get there? Do we have to advocate the legislator? Let's do that.
Within the full planned document, I recognize you have the one-sheet summary. Within the full planned document, there is a page or two on other potential funding sources in addition to the millage. So it might be worth taking a look at that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name's Ed Gren and I've got a short statement and a request from you, if possible. Partialville at one time was called Dog Patch because anybody who didn't want their pet anymore drove to Partialville and dropped them off. And in looking at this list here of roads to be reworked, the village of Partialville and Rodney Dangerfield have one thing in common: no respect at all. From August of each year through November, tens of thousands of people visit our little village of Partialville during cider mill season. The state of Michigan has even designated the village of Partialville and Cullen Road as a state scenic site to see. Regrettably, Partialville Road from Old 23 to the village is a Heartland Township or Livingston County disgrace that needs immediate disaster relief funds. In the first eight tenths of a mile from US 23, traveling west on Partialville Road to the Enbridge Pumping Station driveway, now under construction, I counted more than 20 areas on the edges of the road that have been completely destroyed, some areas as long as 20 feet long. The blacktop in these areas has been reduced to nothing but small chunks of rubble. I have personally witnessed numerous double-trailer gravel train haulers lined up on the side of Partialville Road waiting to be flagged into the Enbridge Pumping Station worksite. It was bizarre looking at a posted load restriction sign and have gravel haulers and large earth moving equipment on flapbed trucks waiting to be loaded and unloaded. The Caterpillar dozer I saw working on the driveway entrance was a D-64, which I know weighs 45,000 pounds. Another piece of equipment was a large excavator in a range of 65,000 pounds. As many of you may know or may not know, most vulnerable or weakest link of these heavy loads is the first couple of feet on each side of the road. These heavy haulers are supposed to be limited to 20,000 pounds in a speed limit of 10 miles an hour. However, I have followed these haulers at speeds in excess of 45 miles an hour. Partialville residents continue to and from the village down the center of the road playing deadly chicken games with each other to prevent the destruction of their vehicle suspension systems. There are now three large areas in the middle of the road that have completely caved in due to the weight of these vehicles and the loads they are carrying. My wife Cheryl and I have lived in Partialville for over 40 years and during this period of time, the Partialville Road has never been paved, only patched. I would ask that the township board please move Partialville Road to their list of repaving for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of points on Partialville. So we did have a meeting with the Senior Center earlier this week and Partialville Road came up a number of times, so we're certainly hearing Partialville Road. We're certainly hearing the damage that Enbridge is doing to it currently as well and we're well aware of it and we're working with the road commission and with Enbridge and that one's not going to go unnoticed. Enbridge is going to have to do some fixing of what they've done.
I appreciate it.
The Partialville Road was included on the list of paved roads that the task force was looking at. And as I mentioned, the task force did have to make some tough decisions for this draft plan and Partialville, in the first draft, didn't make the cut. Now, the more the task force hears what residents have to say in advocating for Partialville, then that certainly is going to get heard by the task force. So it's not that Partialville was ignored, it's... There had to be a cutoff of what projects were going to be included and what projects weren't in order to stay within that one and a half-mill budget and Partialville, in this draft of the plan, didn't make that first cut.
I had heard that there was some kind of consideration going on between Enbridge and Livingston County Road Commission, that they may try to do something because of the cave-ins of the road. But my experience with Enbridge before was that the road commission gave them our pond, maybe as we're on the board at the time, but we woke up in the morning and saw the Oar River. We didn't have a pond anymore. They drained it overnight, killed every fish in the pond, and when we asked Enbridge to at least seed the pond and put some of the fish back, they never did come through. So I don't know how their word is relative to following through and so, just so you know.
Hi, my name is Nancy Rixby and I live right in the settlement, right on the corner of East and Maple. My question is...
Can you get the microphone a little bit closer? I know some folks in the back are indicating...
There you go.
Thank you.
My question is, is that I've lived here for 20 years, I've seen the sidewalks, what little there are, deteriorate, and I've never seen a homeowner held accountable. Why is that? Is there no ordinance that makes us responsible for the sidewalk in front of our own house? I mean, if we have an existing sidewalk, shouldn't it be maintained safely?
The... A lot of the sidewalks are along... A couple ways to answer it. A lot of the sidewalks in the subdivisions that are along private roads, those sidewalks are under private ownership. They're collectively owned by the homeowners association if it is a private road. So in that situation, I'm not sure if that qualifies for you, but in that situation...
I live in the village. I live right by the schools and I watch the kids walk every day. In this street, especially on East. Today, I watched the schools, must have had an event, and there was nothing but, I bet you, a couple hundred kids that walked.
Sure. And I saw those kids soon, I was wondering where they were going.
They do it every year. I don't know if they mentor or, you know, at the daycare, but the point is, is that there's... There are existing sidewalks and they're in horrible condition. And there's not one homeowner that I know of that's ever been held accountable to repair their own sidewalks. Is there an ordinance out there?
There is not.
Why is there not?
It is something that I know we've considered and Larry helped me out at a board level. We have looked at it.
For a new homeowner to put in a sidewalk, connect them.
Go back. The board prior to 2004 had worked on a sidewalk ordinance. And I don't have firsthand knowledge of this because I was just in the audience watching during that time. And what I recall is that there was some debate on the board about, you know, do we fix them? Do we force the people to fix them? And so they decided to not pass the ordinance because the ordinance does do what you say, it requires the homeowners to fix the roads. So the board has been discussing putting some money into those sidewalks to get them up to a level, then coming in with the ordinance and saying, okay, they're in condition now, but from here on out, there's going to be an ordinance in place to say if they need repaired, you're responsible for them. So that is something that we're working on that is separate from this plan.
Okay.
And in the village in particular, one of the areas for pathway improvement is sidewalks in the village. It's one of the top ones. So part of this proposal would be to start making those sidewalk connections in the village and also improve the failing ones that exist there now. There's some issues in the village with drainage and some other things and we fully agree that a lot of the sidewalks are in severe disrepair. So that's part of what would be included with this millage proposal.
Well, I watched East Street deteriorate. They've been putting in the schools through the years. The church has expanded dramatically and I've seen a lot of equipment going down. This morning at 5:30 in the morning, I watched three tour buses come out of East and turn onto Maple. Why, I don't know, but... And I see semis do this constantly, I see school buses. That road is in horrible shape. I was taking pictures of it today. Part of my yard has sunk and it just so happens to line up with a great big crack in the road. So I don't know if there's something going on because they've been doing all kinds of demolition in the park, too. They've got that, all the woods are completely cleared out and I know that's the natural drain that runs through there. So I don't know if they're rerouting the water and with everything else going on, it's shifting the water table, but I've got great concerns being in the settlement, that my foundation is shifting because of all this construction and all this heavy equipment going up and down these roads when there's no bedrock. It's all sand in the settlement. So, you know, in some ways, I blame the school a lot because of all the equipment that they keep using up and down, and I see them running up and down the sidewalks and their equipment, too. So just wanted to know if there's any ordinance for the sidewalks because I do worry about the kids coming up and down East and there just doesn't seem to be any push forward.
Not currently. If the township and the taxpayers of Heartland do invest in the sidewalks, then the follow-up may very well be an ordinance to keep them maintained.
Good evening. Chris Klowe, I live on Bullard Road.
Chris Klowe, lived on Bullard Road, been here for twenty years. Might add, all the roads are like Partialville Road. Everyone's swerving to avoid one another. The road's shoulders drain onto the road. When you stand on the road, and then what's that do? You see the road fall apart. Okay. Where's the accountability for the road commission workers? You call on a problem, they do just the opposite. You stop the road grader guy, say, hey, it's flooding here. You know, when I watch it rain, it backs up. And they do just the opposite. They don't care. There's no accountability. You call, you talk to people, no one does anything about the accountability of the workers. A lot of people, I travel for the auto companies, Europe, around the United States, you see how they work on the roads. Over here, in this state, it's a pretty poor scenario, when you see how they work, and the quality of work you get for their wages. I'm sure they're making good money. Everyone's taking pay cuts in my industry. I'm not a auto worker in factory. I'm a white collar worker, engineering degree. A lot of people in my field have lost their jobs, have lost their income, cut in half because of global expansion. But the commission, road commission, it's unlimited. It just keeps going up, more and more, and they get whatever they want. And there's no accountability. And why is road money going to the schools? If the schools are underfunded, we got to come up with a better way to fund the schools. We can't take the road money and then say, oh, we don't have road money, we need more. Because my whole adult life, everything's been more, 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 more. But for probably almost everyone in this room, their salaries and income is less, 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 because we're in a global economy. So, I'd like to see some accountability in the quality of the road work that we get around this, not only Heartland Township, but the state of Michigan, too. It's every road. You go out of state in the summer, they're filling the cracks. Over here, they're parked on the side of the road, or in the bar drinking with their buddies. And a lot of people have businesses, and they see the county trucks pulled off to the side, and they're in a business next door, whooping it up for two, three hours on the clock. And he's even called and reported it. But they're still there. That's all I got to say. We need some accountability, and I'm sure a lot of people won't mind paying a little bit more for getting a good road. But when it's a blank check, and no one does anything to make sure that they do their job correctly, like in every other industry that's a private industry, either get fired or replaced. But over here, you get promoted, and in a pay raise, in overtime, because you've got more work. Let's make work. Hey, if we do it wrong, we'll be out there fixing it on overtime. That's all I have to say. I want some accountability.
Dave, if you don't mind, I have something to say, unless you have. I mean, I have had conversations about this with the township manager, and they have had discussions with the county road commission, and have said, you know, if this thing, if this millage passes, we're going to be looking for a higher level of maintenance from you. And as you say now, and you can see it on the gravel roads especially, they go, there's no crown on them anymore. They're just creating a bathtub. The water just stays on the road, and then the road falls apart, potholes up. So, if we're able to get this passed, we've made it clear to the road commission that we're going to be looking for a higher level of maintenance, looking at the grading, how it's done, crowning the roads, so that this investment isn't just going down the tubes with continued maintenance, the way it has been done. So, we're trying to advocate for that.
Larry, I think you ought to ask for it now, we're in the way of the millage plan. The maintenance ought to be at its high right now. Not wait until we get the millage passed.
Right. Because then they get-
Well, I understand what you're saying. They just don't answer that. They answer to you, they don't answer to the township board. I mean, I remember when I got on the board-
You don't tell me you're going to wait till the millage is repaired, and ask for higher maintenance. The maintenance, the high level of maintenance should start right now.
Right.
Right now.
Because it's just like when the stimulus plan passed back, you know, the federal one. What was the report right after that? The big parties they're having with cocaine, booze, and hookers. Everyone remembers that, but the media quieted down. It was like, they took our tax dollars and partied with it. And I don't want to see the same thing go here. Road commission takes our tax dollars, and now they're on overtime, and we got the same scenario out there. They get more money, we get a little bit better road repair, and then that money's gone, and we're like back in the same boat. We paid more for nothing.
We paid more.
That's all I have to say.
I'm going to start off with a question first. Fenton Road, is that thing being repaved all the way basically from M-59 to Holtford?
Uh-
It's one point five mil.
Yeah, new pavement.
Totally repaved from all the way up north.
Dave, can we put up the map? Maybe everyone can see it.
Well, it's on here. It's listed. Are they talking the total repavement, you know, four inches compacted to two all the way north? Or is it just spotty, just repair areas?
No, it would be, for one thing, the narrowness of the road through where it dips down, for one thing. So, there's going to have to be some changing of grades, and yeah, new pavement, basically reconstruction of the road, correct?
Okay. Because I have a little problem with that. I travel that road every day, and it's got some bad spots, I agree. But no way does that thing need to be repaved. That is a total waste of money from top to bottom. I know it's a high-traffic road, people cutting from not using 23 and trying to use Fenton Road. And I'm one of them, believe me. But Partial Road, you mentioned, terrible shape, crowds. I mean, there's some really bad roads, that are just absolutely, I love Alford Reed Road. You can't even go down the middle now. That part's gone, okay? About three years ago, I called the road commission, and on this gentleman's note, what they did is they dumped a load of fill, filler. They came with a road grader, graded it out with a road grader, and went back and forth with it with a four-wheel drive, just to smooth it out. That's how they repaired this section of the road. But I dare anybody here to drive that road and try to stay in between the lines you're supposed to be in. I think anybody in this commission, I don't know who came up with this list, but I dare you to drive that road. Somebody's going to get hurt. It's just the worst road I've ever seen. It's probably the worst road in this county, no doubt about it. It's a very short road, so nobody probably cares.
Is it Fenton or Reed Road?
Reed Road. Reed Road is actually in really good shape. I mean, there are certain parts you have problems with, no doubt. But I think the repaving it, the whole thing from top to bottom, is a waste.
Reed Road, I don't think anyone who's been on it would disagree, that it's probably the worst road in the township. Task Force was as aware of that as anyone.
Well, that's the township told me about ten years ago, and five years ago, and seven years ago, and three years ago. Like I said, they came and put some coal pack down, leveled it out.
The county did.
They called it up.
Reed Road was on the list of roads that the task force had to consider. And again, tough decisions. It didn't make the cut this time around. If the task force continues to hear Reed Road-
Same, I've heard from the road commission for ten years. It's on a list.
Right. But the potential exists with this road improvement plan, to, if, based on this public input that we want to hear-
Right.
It has the potential to be reevaluated, and potentially be included as one of the-
Right, I know factor was used on percentage of use versus-
Traffic counts was a big factor.
Absolutely. Nobody's using Reed Road anymore, because they'd rather take Clyde Road, a dirt road, to get there, which is pretty poor. Yeah, so there's just some problems I have here with some of the roads that are being going to be upgraded. Like I said, Fenton Road, just a lot of money being spent for not a lot of use. Some of these road gravel ones, you're going to sink five hundred thousand dollars in the Pleasant Valley Road, and it's still going to be a pond. Sections of it, they're just totally a mess. It's too curvy, it needs to be straightened out. I mean, there's just a lot of issues on this that I don't think you can do with five hundred thousand dollars.
Part of this would be some, looking at some realignment, and some, not just adding more gravel to Pleasant Valley, but looking at some realignment, and some improved ditching, and things like that.
Hacker Road being paved, that's been talked about for about fifty years, as long as I've been here. I'm not sure what the justification is on that one for one point five mil.
Justification on that one is that, Osceola Township has already said that they would commit to go contribute half of that, based on their existing road millage. So, there would be a cost sharing with that one.
That sounds more like a Livingston County, something they should be doing, not should be doing on the township level.
I don't disagree. I would keep coming back to Livingston County, has a certain amount of funding that-
Same thing basically with Fenton Road, that should be a Livingston County. We should be taking care of more of the Heartland roads, and the small roads that affect the people directly, not the ones that are being used by Evergreen and Brother to go north, south, on, or east west.
One of the ideas with Hacker Road, excuse me, is Hacker Road, if paved all the way from Grand River to M-59, has that potential to be that, another north to south regional connector, to take some of the-
That's a Livingston County issue, not a Heartland Township issue.
Correct. To take some of the congestion, in part, to take some of the congestion out of the M-59, Old 23, US 23, kind of bottleneck that we have through there. If you have that second north to south connector-
I agree. I do that on a regular basis, daily. But I'm just saying, that's a Livingston County, that's a Michigan thing, not a Heartland Township issue.
That's not the way the task force looked at it. The task force looked at, they wanted some north, south, east, west roads, that if people were interested in bypassing this intersection down here, they could.
I'm more worried about road conditions, as we have, not taking-
The county don't care if keeping traffic out of that intersection, but once this development gets full down here, people are going to be saying, how come I can't get around it? So, the task force looked at north, south, and east, west roads that were within the township's parameters, that could be used as bypass. And 59, when it goes under construction, you're going to be looking for a way around that intersection.
And my last comment is, I'd like to see the roads and the walkways, the separate issues on the, not bundled together. I mean, at least maybe one of them would have a chance of passing.
Yeah.
Just, thank you.
Thank you.
John Wasle, I'm a thirty-plus-year resident of Heartland. I live off of Fenton Road. I agree with the bulk of the people that have spoke up here. Couple questions I would have, and selfishly, I look at Fenton Road, you know, like everyone does, but bigger picture than that. To my knowledge, Fenton Road is classified a Class A road. I believe that's true. The gravel haulers and all of that do nothing, and you already know what they do. They tear up everything. And I doubt very seriously if that road, when it was, last I remember, early eighties, they put down something, I'll call it pea gravel, for lack of a better term, down, and then they kept running it over to compact it. That's the last major work I've seen, in all the years that I have lived there. Why can't that Class A be lifted? I'm told from people that have been around a lot longer than I have, that that road is built on a swamp. And you can put your money in and cap it again, but in a very short period of time, they're going to beat it to death again. And like the one gentleman pointed out, we're right back where we started. One question I need for clarification, I didn't get a chance to check a map. Fenton Road is scheduled Hibner to Holtford. I don't know where that is. Is that north of Dunham?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
It is.
Fenton Road, the Fenton Road project is essentially two projects, the way it's divided out. But it's essentially Fenton Road all the way from M-59 to the township border.
Okay. Again, I'm sure the freeways, not that they need any more traffic, but I'm sure the freeways are built with quite a difference in physical concrete that's laid out, the consistency of the concrete, plus the road that they handle. And like I said, they're just going to cap it a little bit, and they're going to tear it all up for us again. And I support most of what everybody has said here. We all, I'm waiting for my suspension to fall out of my car shortly, but anything you could do would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Matthews, I'm a twenty-one-year resident. I would like to begin with, to advocate for Blaine Road, where it stops being paved to Maxfield Road. That road was so bad this spring, that I had to go down to only driving a pickup truck in and out of our place, because it would have destroyed my car. And that's just not acceptable. Another question I have is regarding the selection of roads, and I'm getting a bit enlightened here about the kinds of traffic. It seems like we focused on a couple of thoroughfares at each end of the township, for north and south, with Fenton and Hacker. And that really is a set of roads that is probably traveled more by people that don't live in Heartland Township. And are we trying to benefit the people of Heartland Township with the millage increase? Or are we trying to benefit people that live outside the township? I think that's a question that needs to be asked. The other question I have is, in selecting the targets for this project, what kind of data was used to make the choices? Were traffic patterns, travel counts used? And if so, is that data available to me?
The traffic counts are in the full version of the plan, which, as I mentioned, is on the website. So, that data is available.
Okay.
Help me out, what else? The task force, when they had to look at projects, one of the things they wanted to prioritize is allocating a certain percentage of, you know, if we consider this a bucket, they wanted to give so much of the bucket to gravel, so much of the bucket to paved roads, so much of the bucket to pathways. And they did go through a lot of discussion on how to allocate between those various projects. Once that was determined, then it was based on a lot of factors, including traffic counts and the cost of the proposed improvement, which of the projects could get done, which are the highest priority, and which could get done within the amount of funding that would be available, if we keep ourselves to one and a half mils.
Okay.
There was also a rating that the township used, which is what the state uses, called Pazer.
Yes.
And that was considered, as well, as how to determine which road to be chosen first. So, they had traffic count, and then the condition of the road. The Pazer is basically the condition of the road.
Pazer applies to paved roads. And those road ratings are available, and we can get those to you.
What about the gravel roads?
Gravel roads don't have a standardized evaluation system like Pazer. But the task force certainly, for one thing, the task force drove every one of these segments, not just the ones that are included in the final plan document, but all the ones that didn't make the first cut.
And what happens to those roads that didn't make the list?
They continue to, there is some funding in here, just for general road grading and maintenance. The township is looking to do additional road chloriding with this millage funding, and that would apply to all gravel roads, not just the ones that are going to get an improvement project to them. The township board has already approved a third road chloride application this year. Up until this year, we've been doing two per year. So, the gravel roads that aren't going to be included for a specific project within this road and pathway millage, are going to be available for additional maintenance funding from this millage.
And who is going to monitor what the road commission does, and what measures of accountability will there be for them to perform this?
The township can monitor it. The township does have an engineer, engineering consulting firm that we work with. You know, the road commission, their contribution to this would be to provide the engineering, which is a real cost, if engineering's twenty, twenty-five percent of any road project cost. That is what the road commission would contribute. They contribute their engineers to do the design and engineering on these projects.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jett Papernak, resident of Heartland about twenty years. And I'm, look, and is this meeting going for a vote on November?
The, yes, the-
You're going to put it on the ballot?
That hasn't been determined yet. The township board will make that decision in August, whether or not to include this as a ballot initiative in November. But as of right now, that's what's under consideration.
That's where you're heading though.
Yes.
Right. Okay, I just want to question- Okay, I just want to question you. For instance, I'm not saying it could have passed or anything, I'm saying if the money comes in, who gets it? County?
We don't just write a check to the county for $9 million.
Okay. But how is distributed back to the township?
So these are the projects that we would see get done with this millage. If this were the final plan that gets approved by the voters in November, these are the projects that would get done. The township would most likely bond to this, so we would do all the projects upfront in the first one or two years, and, and get them done, and then pay, you know, pay that off over the 10-year term of the mill.
Right. This would be strictly used for the township.
Correct. Yes.
But who would be handling it? I mean, four, five years down the road.
The township would be managing the projects, the road commission would be, would be doing the projects. They would, you know, put these projects out to bid like they do most projects, and they would be monitoring it, engineering it.
Well, just like Hacker, you says it's going to cost one and a half mils.
That's the township's share.
You're only going to collect in one year, about 900?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
So how are you going to determine that? Who is first, and who is second, and what's going on? Some of these won't get it done until 10 years?
No. The idea is that we, we bond the total, the 10-year total of the term of the mill, so nine million dollars. We bond that upfront, we get that money upfront, we get these projects done in the first one, two, three years, depending on the manpower available at the road commission level to get them done. And then we've got the 10-year term of the millage to, to pay off that bond.
Well, I know, like, if they have to pave, they have to have an outside contractor doing that. The county doesn't do paving.
Correct.
Well, another question is, I live up on Reed Road, you've probably heard a lot of complaints about it.
Absolutely.
And they come around and they put a patch on it. It's not hot, it's, maybe the first rain comes and the patch is gone, we're back to this square one again. And they, you have to get a lot of complaints down there before they come up. So, and I don't even see Reed Road on here.
Reed Road was, was not one of the projects that the task force, after much consideration, included on this draft plan. I will say again, we want to hear this. If we hear Reed Road, Reed Road, we're going to take that back to the task force, and they're going to take that under advisement. If you do have an opportunity to look at the full plan, these were all the projects that the task force was asked to consider. Reed Road was one of the projects under consideration, but it, it didn't rise to the top in the first round of, of looking at the potential projects.
Well, then it doesn't look like I have to vote for it.
It's ultimately going to be, it's ultimately going to be up to the voters in November.
Right.
That said, we want to create the plan that has the, the most potential for our residents to support it, and that's why we want this public input. We do. Every time I hear Reed Road, I'm, every time I hear Reed Road, I'm running it down. Every time I hear Parkville Road, I'm running it down.
Well, at least somebody's paying some attention to it, but will you get results out of it? Well, like, I know Hacker Road, I haven't used, never used it. Because one thing, it was gravel, and I didn't care to travel on gravel roads, if I could avoid it. Well, if you have to, you have to.
Sure.
There's no question about it.
The, for, for the township to fund every road project that, that really needs to be done, we would have been looking at, I think, something like six to eight mils to do that. And we just knew that wasn't realistic. We asked the voters for that much. We had to come up with the, the task force had to come up with a realistic millage rate, and then they had to work within that budget. And so some projects didn't, didn't make the list.
What about our neighboring township, Tyrone? Did they go for something like this?
I don't know if Tyrone has a millage or not. I know Osceola does. I know Genoa went for one last fall and didn't get it. I know Hamburg's going to. I believe that approximately half of the 16 townships in Livingston County do have a road millage.
They have a road millage without the-
They do. And we are one of the couple that are going to go for one this, this fall.
Well, we'll see what happens. Okay, thank you.
I'm Jane Decker, and I've been a resident for 12 years. First of all, I want to thank you for taking this on. Our roads are awful, and if we can't get anywhere, then I'm glad that the township is looking into it. So thank you for the work you're doing. I have some questions. In your thing, it said that Livingston County has the lowest per capita funding for roads of any county in Michigan?
Yes.
How did we get that rating?
The, part of it is, the key word is, is per capita. So if you look at the list of road funding per capita in the state of Michigan, the counties at the top are up in the upper peninsula. They don't have the population, so when you divide it up per person, they are getting more per capita. The counties at the bottom of the list are our neighbors in Wayne County, Oakland County, Washington, and so on. The southeast Michigan communities that have all the population, when you do it on a per capita basis, these counties in the southeast region that have the most population get the lowest per capita funding.
But I come back to, I think the first gentleman who spoke, is there something that we can do to lobby to get more money? Or is that completely out of our hands?
The, the model by which the state of Michigan allocates the funding to the local county road commissions is a, a set formula that they've been using for years. Obviously, there's always opportunities to lobby your state senator, your state representative, what the township's position is. That effort has been going on for many, many years, and here we still all are. And it can go on for many, many years, and we may or may not see results. This is a township's opportunity, if the voters approve it, to take it on ourselves.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask is then, if this millage is raising funds to do some paving, et cetera, and have maintenance funds in there, we then are taking over what is Livingston County's responsibility? So your program says that they get $13 million a year, I think. The fact that we're taking some of their costs, are you bugging them to allocate some of that money to you so that we can use it?
So one of the things that we hope can be an outcome of this plan is that there are opportunities to leverage some of these funds for road projects with Livingston County. That's one of the things that we considered, and if you have an opportunity to look at the full plan document, that is one of the other funding options, is if, if we can do some sort of a dollar match, or do for one match with Livingston County, then we have the funds available to do it.
Right. And I did read the full plan.
Yep.
Asking you if you actually see there's potential for that.
The, the road commission has not necessarily committed to us right now that we'll, we'll match you dollar for dollar on this project or that project, but we want to have the, that opportunity. An example of where we do have the dollar match, though, is the Hacker Road, sharing it with Osceola Township project. They've already committed to us that you guys go half, we'll go half, and, and, because it is a border road between the two communities, and get that one done.
Okay.
So that is an opportunity where that project probably wouldn't get done if the two neighboring townships didn't partner to do it.
Okay. Again, back to the, also working on ways not to keep damaging the roads. In your full plan, you lightly alluded to maybe looking at township garbage collection. I'd like to say I really support that. Where I live, you choose your own, we have five days of garbage pickup, and five days of heavy trucks coming through our streets is really silly. So if you're looking for support for garbage collection, so we have one day a week of heavy trucks, I would sure support that. And to that, the roads that are around me, which are a mess, are not on your list. I get it, because we don't have the right amount of traffic. But you do mention the special assessment districts. So I wanted to get a sense of how that works. So tell me if I have this right. So let's say we have a mile, and it looks like from your other cost, it's $300,000 to fix, whatever. And you would help bond that for a 10-year bond, is that correct? So our mile would be responsible for $30,000 a year, divided by the residents on that street? Is that how that works?
More or less. I mean, there may be an opportunity for the township to put some skin in the game in a situation like that. But yes, in general, the, the people who live along that road or have access to that road, for instance, if there's a private road coming off of this hypothetical road that you speak of, then there would have to be some cost sharing from them as well. But the township does have a policy for how we establish these special assessment districts. They would have to be typically, it's 51% of the property owners would have, would have to, would have to agree to it. And then it's a question of, do we consider it to be 51% of the frontage, or 51% of the, just the total homes that, that access the road? There's different ways you can look at that. But that's the idea, is that the, you know, the township would essentially front the money, and then the, the property owners within that special assessment district would pay that back over a-
10 years?
Term of 10 years, it can be, or-
Do you ever get 20? I worked it out, 10 years, we're not-
Right. I, I don't want to commit to what it would be for the, you know, in this hypothetical.
I just know what, there are possibilities, I just really make that up.
20, in my experience, is a little long in an SAD, but, you know, we certainly, if we have that discussion, we can work things like that out.
And to that, you answered somebody else, and that was getting a copy of Pathpasser, of the, for our roads.
Yep, Pazer.
Pazer. And how do we go about getting that?
You know what, Dave? I'll go make some copies of, of the full plan. That's where it is.
Oh, you're, for every single road?
For the roads we considered.
No, no, no. I'm telling you, you've considered many roads.
We have a, so we, we do have a map of the Pazer rating. Again, Pazer ratings are only for paved roads. The P, Pazer is an acronym, the P in paved, and Pazer stands for paved. We do have a map from the Livingston County Road Commission of their ratings for the paved roads in the Hartland Township. And probably the best thing to do would be to put it up on the Hartland Roads website.
That'd be great.
Yes.
If our residents on our street can look at our street.
And what you'll see, when you see that, is, so they, a good road is green, a fair road is yellow, a bad road is red. When you see that map, you'll see a whole lot of red. The 60, over 60% of the paved roads in Hartland Township got a poor rating, a poor Pazer rating.
Right. So I just want to get what ours is, so I can talk to the neighborhood about, so you'll put that on the website? Thank you. Those are my questions. Thanks a lot.
Hi, my name's Dora Conneig. I've lived in Hartland about 15 years. My question is, is when you're saying the gravel road improvements, Don O'Mclyde, what exactly does that entail? What are you going to be doing that would change what Dunham Road looks like now?
It can vary slightly by which road it is, but in general, it's improving the crown of the road, improving the ditching, improving the shoulders, improving the drainage on either side, and adding a limestone cap to it. Limestone is, is the optimal gravel road surface, it bonds the best. But in addition to that, limestone is only as good as how well you maintain it. So in addition to that, it would be additional road chloriding, because the chloride is what kind of helps the limestone bond together.
Because Dunham Mae has had limestone since I've been here. They've already put it down once, and it's deteriorating down. And then, at the same time, would they improve the bridge? Because the bridge is obviously the worst part on Dunham.
The Dunham Road Bridge? Yes. So that's, yeah, it's on the-
It's on the other list, it's just, it's on the bottom of it, though. So I don't know if that was at the same time that they would improve Dunham?
Well, the idea is that all these projects get done within the first one, two, maybe three years. It certainly would make sense if there's a crew working on Dunham Road to, to do the other improvements I spoke of, that would be when the, the bridge improvement would be done as well.
Okay, so it's actually just changing the, putting ditches in, or, well, there are some ditches in there, but it would be improving the grading of it, and?
One of the biggest things is improving the crown on the road, so that when the water does hit it, it flows off the way it's supposed to.
Okay. And I agree that you should change and separate the roads from the pathways. It'd have a much better chance of passing.
I'm happy to do that, and, and we will do that in just one second. The, just so you're aware, the pathways have gotten a lot of consideration from the task force included. Originally, in one of the earlier iterations of this plan, there was more pathway improvements proposed, and the task force, based on some early feedback, decided to scale back a little bit on some of the proposed pathways. We, we've heard the arguments on both sides of that. Some folks are staunch advocates for having the non-motorized connectivity, and there's certainly valid arguments for that. Other folks have argued that pathways are great, but let's get the roads fixed first, and there's certainly valid arguments for that. Those are, again, the tough decisions that the task force had to make, and where they came out was allocating about 10% of that overall $9 million toward pathway extensions and better maintenance of the pathways. But I, I would be interested, the folks who were, joined us this evening, I'm not sure the best way to do it, but I would be interested, a show of hands, how many folks would be interested in, let's say, keeping the pathway component, whatever that pathway component is, some component of pathways within the plan proposal. And so can I assume, by a show of hands, that everyone else would prefer that pathways not be included in this road improvement proposal? Certainly very valid feedback that, that the task force will take under serious advisement. I, I think it's very, it was evident, if you're sitting in my seat, how overwhelming that was.
You know, the pathways there, and not to minimize the importance of them at all, but the roadway, it's their necessity, because we have to drive them.
I'm not going to agree or disagree. What I will say is that there are folks in this township who would say pathways are just as important. I'm not saying either side is right, I'm just saying there's certainly two very valid sides to that argument.
My name is John Limone, and I've been in Hartland for 16 years. I read the whole report, I think it was really nicely done. I think everyone agrees the county's really done a horrible job, so you had to make some tough decisions in trying to, you know, pick the worst roads. I'm glad they recognized Pleasant Valley, because I think it is one of the worst roads in the county, which I happen to live on, of course, but, but it really is a bad road. And the county has said earlier that Pleasant Valley Road is a major north-south pathway, which, which really gets a lot of traffic. And if 23 ever backs up, it's like non-stop. It is one of the most dangerous roads, and the dully's down the sides, big rocks that are coming up through it, so definitely, you know, redoing the gravel there from Commerce to M-59 would be a great idea. But I would consider, though, is possibly paving it instead. If you, based on the cost in the report, it says about $1 million per mile, that section of road is about one mile, and we're spending about $500,000 on gravel, which, which, like other people have said, the gravel could be messed up in a couple of years, especially the way the county has been treating the gravel roads. For instance, my driveway, I put a paved driveway in up to Pleasant Valley, and since I did that eight years ago, now I have an eight-inch drop, which, down to the road, where the road used, you know, from where the road is now from where it used to be. So it is pretty bad, and I think it would be better spending our money to actually pave that road, instead of putting gravel down, having to redo it again a couple of years later.
The only thing I'd mention to that, and this isn't meant to be a disagreement, it's just a education, the, because of the, the alignment of Pleasant Valley, and we did have an estimate for actually paving it, it does go well in excess of that $1 million a mile rule, just because of the, there's a number of issues with Fenton Road that, or, excuse me, Pleasant Valley that would have to be addressed in order to pave it properly. And I don't have in front of me what that estimate was, just be aware that it was significantly more than the, the $1 million. And the task force did have to take that into consideration. Yeah, if we could, if we can continue to use the microphone, though, just so everybody can hear the questions, and, thank you.
And talking about Pleasant Valley Road, I am a male lady, and that is my route. I know how horrible that road can be. But what I'm asking is that years ago, I was told that the gravel pit that's at the end of the pavement in the dirt has to pay for every load, X amount of cents per load that's supposed to go to the maintenance on Pleasant Valley. Is that still in existence? I was told Norbert Cole Savage, I believe, is the one who negotiated that.
Mert made it.
Yeah.
It isn't accurate.
It's inaccurate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Accurate.
Okay. That's what I'd always been told, so we now know the truth.
My name's Jerry Cullen, and I've been a resident since 1968, so I've been around here a while and seen a few changes. You were talking about your task force, and the people on it, and the groupings, and getting together, discussing the roads, and you mentioned a drawing or a map from the road commission. During your discussions, did anybody ever bring anybody in from the maintenance department or Livingston- the Livingston County Road Commission, to ask them, where are the problems, where are the roads that need the most attention? Did anybody, like Wayne, from the head of maintenance, anybody ever brought him in?
Yes.
Yeah, that's where this list, the bigger list originated from, the list that the task force was asked to pare down to fit within a one-and-a-half mil budget, that list came from the Livingston County Road Commission, that was the road commission telling us, these are the roads that we know need to be fixed, and that we don't have the funds to do.
Okay, because I heard task force, task force, task force, didn't hear about any input from them, that's why I was asking the question.
Yeah, we've been in, throughout this whole process, we've been in constant contact with the Livingston County Road Commission, that's where these estimates come from, they've been, they've been scrutinized and vetted by the Livingston County Road Commission, so we have confidence that these dollar figures that we have in this plan are accurate.
Is it true, on the repaving of a road, it's approximately two-hundred to four-hundred thousand a mile, is approximately something in that range?
That's closer to a million dollars a mile.
Now, I'm not talking about paving, I'm talking about repaving.
Repaving, it really depends on a number of factors, including what's the condition of the subgrade underneath, so I can't tell you that I know what the dollar cost is per mile, because it depends on too many factors of the condition of the road and what's underneath it.
Okay. One of the things I thought I heard anyways a lot, and some of the other gentlemen back here addressed it too, is the fact that it sounds like some of the considerations were made for some of the major roads, serving sometimes people that are not necessarily those in, living in our community, that are more interested in going north-south or east-west in a hurry, rather than serving, or looking at the roads that get people to and from their homes and to the main thoroughfares from there. And I think sometimes we've overlooked the fact that people got to go from that home to that road to go someplace else, and are worried about somebody that's coming from Brighton, they're headed to Fenton. The other thing is too, in looking at this over ten years, I'm living on a road that isn't even in here, or possibly even considered, why do I want to vote for it? If I don't see any hope for anything coming from my road, why do I want to do that? Why do I want to support that? There's nothing in here that says, oh, we're going to set aside two million dollars to look at different various projects as they come up over the years, and maybe my road's got a consideration, maybe it doesn't, I don't have any hope here, so that's my concerns.
Thank you.
Live on the same road Jerry does, that road flunked the test, I know it flunked the test. I've been paying your one-point-five mil for a long time, through assessment, because they say it's a paved road, there's no mud, but it might as well be the moon. I understand there's only twenty-two homes on that short piece, and that doesn't get the traffic, it's a dead-end road, it only serves us, but as, I'm going to say the same thing Jerry did, you're asking me to come up with one-point-five on my property that will not affect me, most of the roads in your plan, I don't drive. So, my alternative, and there's four of us here from Carley June, if I can see everybody, it's going to be a special assessment, I get doubled hit, that's not fair. Either this plan needs to be more inclusive to everybody, and not selective, I understand where you went with the selectivity, but it's not enough, you're asking me to come up with money that I'm not going to use those roads, and my road is terrible. Now, your estimates all came from the county commission?
Yes.
I know of a fact where some residents before have come up before the board and said, hey, we can pave our road with a private contractor, but it's a county road, they can't do it. True? They'd save a whole lot of money if they were to pool their money and get it paved on their own, but it's a county road, they couldn't do it. So, you're asking us again to come up with money, this money's going to go right back to the county, now, I've got nothing against the county, but we're feeding the monster here, guys, ladies. The plan isn't going to work, sorry, not in my eyes, it's not inclusive enough. Oh, can I say one more thing? Sorry. As far as the pathways, I'm all for a walkable community, always have been, I think we need it, because there's apples and oranges, I think you need to take that pathway project out and the road, and keep them separate, I think you can probably run with the pathways, I can use the pathways, everybody in the community can use the pathways. The road thing, eh.
Good evening, I'm Dan Rhodes, I've been Heartland resident for sixteen years now, I live in the Tri-Lakes Association, I don't know if you're familiar with where that's at, we are a private road subdivision, basically the dues for our subdivision is about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year, that takes care of all the snow plowing, and takes care of repair of the roads, and you're turning around, you're telling me it's going to be a hundred and fifty dollars to take care of these other roads. Now, I need to kind of raise dues over there, so we can kind of fix our roads, but you're taking the money right out of my wallet before I can even do that. I think you're going for too much money at one time, that's what I believe at that point. A lot of what you have at the end of your, and this is very good packet, I will admit that, a lot of what you have there, talking about looking for extra funds, I think needs to be the first approach, rather than going for the approach of all the taxpayers' money. I think you need to get a task force to go to the state, ask them for more money for different projects, I know the city of Davidson just had their total downtown rebuilt, and it was all on grants, not a single taxpayer dollar. So, all your, all your projects that you're looking for here, if you were looking for a small amount, I'd probably support it, but when you're going for more money than when I can take care of the roads in my whole subdivision, there's no way I would support that. And I'm not speaking for the rest of my subdivision, about a hundred and thirty-four people, but I believe a lot of them have that same belief. Any questions? Nope.
I don't, do you have any questions for, for any of us?
Well, does, do you, do you plan on going for any of the, you know, the other funding that they have here?
We do, we're actively seeking a Safe Routes to School, we're working on an action plan for that, in the hopes that we can get some, some grant money from that program. I will acknowledge that it's, it would be in an amount that's nowhere near what we need to do any of this, and the Safe Routes to School grant in particular would only be for pedestrian improvements within the, the school area, in particular in our village area. There are transportation enhancement grants out there, they're very competitive, and that grant money is not what it was years ago, you know, as, as property values have gone down, and tax revenues have gone down, grant opportunities have gone down, so there, there isn't, they, you know, there isn't this great wealth of grants out there that we're just ignoring, they are limited, and what is available is incredibly competitive.
Okay, now, my question is, are you actually active upon going for those grants, or are we waiting to see if the taxpayers will pay some extra money?
We're actively pursuing one of those grants as we speak, the Safe Routes to School.
Okay.
First, we have to develop an action plan, and then get it approved by MDOT, so I don't have a dollar figure for you yet.
So it's in progress?
Yes. When you mentioned maintaining your private roads, so I sympathize, so for example, I live in a residential, here in Heartland, that has public roads, and our homeowner's association dues go toward maintaining those public roads, crack filling and some other things, because we can't get Livingston County Road Commission to do it. So we, as a homeowner's association, decided if they're not going to do it, we're going to have to do it ourselves, so our association dues went to make those repairs. So I can certainly appreciate the thought of being kind of double-charged on this, I don't disagree with your concern there.
And that goes back to accountability of the road commission, you know, if we go ahead and get all this money here, are they going to turn around and say, oh, great, more money, let's party some more, I mean, you know...
It's not a blank, it's not a blank check to the road commission, it's specifically to do these projects identified in this plan.
Right, I just, I just have a feeling that if there was another way to going around the road commission, or have some accountability for them, you'd get more bang for the buck, if you know what I mean. I think, I think that they're taking too much money to do too little, you know, that's just my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just had a question, well, John Limone, sixteen years, but I have a question on the road commission, so they already have a, they must have some sort of plan on roads that they're going to maintain, and that they're going to work on?
They, they do, they have an annual road project plan.
Okay, so does this plan consider what they're doing, or would, like, would they pay for half of some of these projects, or...
They have not committed to anything on that scale, what they've committed to these, these particular projects is they've committed to conducting the engineering, and as I mentioned, that is a considerable cost, I mean, for us to do our own design and engineering would add twenty-five percent to all these projects, so they are contributing the manpower, the labor, the engineers that they have on staff, to do the design and engineering on these projects.
So I was thinking, when I moved to Heartland like sixteen years ago, there was supposedly an eight-year plan from the county to pave Pleasant Valley, and so they had a plan, they had money, if that's sitting there somewhere, if it's just moved back in their plan, and we could get them to go in on it, that would be nice.
There's, to our knowledge, there's no secret stash of money that anybody can tap into, for example, there is a plan at, at MDOT to do a boulevard along M-59, there's just no funding from the state level to get it done anytime soon.
Okay, but can we, does Livingston County have a plan that goes into the, do you know how far their plans go into the future?
I would have to look into that and get a better answer for you on that one, as far as how far out they are projecting their road improvement planning.
Okay, thank you.
If you, honestly, if you want to leave some contact information, I can see what I can find out on that particular question, and happy to get back to you.
I have Mr. Limone's email address, so we'll get that up.
Yeah, well, I mean, in larger issue, they may have a five-year plan to maintain, or to upgrade certain roads, and want to, you know, they'll pull that off the table once they see that we're doing it.
That I can tell you is not what we, I mean, we've been in close contact with the road commission on this, on these projects, and I trust that if any of these were ones that they would have done anyway, they would have disclosed that to us. I understand that there's a lot of skepticism about the road commission, they have been, they have been very forthcoming in this, because they, they want to see these roads fixed as much as we do.
Thank you.
So far, their only commitment is to twenty-five, the cost is engineering, and then maintenance afterwards, they did say they'd step up to make sure that once these roads were built to the new standards, they'd do it, they'd take care of them every year for us, so I don't know if that helps or not, but I know they're way behind on maintenance, that's why, where we're at.
Dave, on that note, it seems that if, if we were going to put funds to, you know, to make, to make these road improvements, that Livingston County then, once those roads are improved, would have to do less maintenance on those areas that we pay to improve. So with that said, I don't know if that's some of the cost sharing, or the percentages of engineering that you just made reference to, but their future maintenance should be easier.
It, it should, and in addition to that, Livingston County is, is fully on board with, you know, putting, continuing to put Band-Aids on roads that are, that are too far gone, isn't worth their time, isn't worth their, their funding. If, if Heartland Township were to provide the funding to improve that road, then they've committed to us that, once that road gets up to a level where it's, it's worth it to continue the preventative maintenance on it, so that it doesn't fall back into, you know, if we can get it up to a pacer rating eight, through some improvements, they would not let it fall back into a pacer rating, rating four, where if the road's already at a four, they're less inclined to put the maintenance into it, because it's, it's money down a black hole sort of thing. So that's what we've heard from them, is, is if we can get these roads up to a fair or a good level, then it's in their best interest to, to provide the maintenance necessary to keep it at that level, it's, it's more cost-effective, as you're saying, it's preventative maintenance is cheaper than trying to do more on a road that's, that's too far gone.
And I understand that, but I don't know how you put a percentage of savings that they would see if we fixed the road, that residents fixed the road through the village, that the money they would save, and I don't know how you put a percentage on it, but I just think it's worth noting.
And it is noted, it is, and it is, in the full version of the plan, there is a table that shows how much it costs to maintain a road that's a pacer rating nine to ten, versus a seven to eight, versus a five to six, three to four, one to two. As you could expect, it is much more, much more cost-effective to provide maintenance per mile on a road that's a seven to eight than it is on a three or four, and those, those dollar figures are in the plan, and it makes it evident that it's in the best interest of the township, it's been in the best interest of the road commission, to get these roads up to a higher, a higher level of quality, and therefore easier, cheaper to maintain.
Dave's got a question for you. The Livingston County Road Commission, specifically Mike Crane, who puts pressure on him to do various things? As an example, as you know, M-Bridge is over there building a new pumping station, does the township have any pressure relative to M-Bridge or Mike Crane saying, you may be able to do this, but you can't destroy our roads in doing it? You can't, as Livingston County, come over here into Heartland and beat our roads up, you can't take fifty or sixty gravel haul trucks and all this heavy equipment, come down Partialville Road and destroy it. I would think, as a township supervisor here, I would say, hey, you can't do that, unless you follow these, this criteria here, will we ever accept you to do that? The, I mentioned earlier here, we had a deal maybe twenty years ago, M-Bridge came in, putting a new pipeline in, wanted to pressurize it, well, they needed water, so they came over and asked the road commission, why the road commission, not the Heartland Township, but they did, and Crane says, yes, do you want the Partialville pond? Take the Partialville pond, so they did, overnight drained the whole thing, totally against the law, no one gave him the authority to do that, and I would have thought, as a township supervisor here, I'd have been over there like we were in Partialville, putting Crane to the wall, and we did, there was three or four of us over there, saying, what in the hell are you doing here? You know, this is against the law, who gave you the authority to do something like this? Well, we're in that situation right now, we got a road that's completely tore up, those heavy trucks have caved the whole road in, and it seems to me that maybe the board here, or the commission, should have a little sit-down session with Mr. Crane, and say, you need to do something about that, you came over here and gave a company permission to destroy our road, and you better fix it, simple as that.
Sure, so, and then, on what's going on with Partialville Road right now, I do know that we are actively in conversations with the road commission, and with the folks at M-Bridge, I can't say that I'm firsthand involved, I know our Department of Public Works Director is, and the township manager is also involved in those as well, we are trying to get to a resolution on that.
Okay, appreciate it, Dave.
I've got a quick question, and you probably can answer more than anybody, we pay nineteen cents a gallon right now for road improvements, I guess in the legislature right now, they're trying to work out a different way of paying for that?
Yes.
Have they come across with anything yet, or...
So, last I heard a summary on this, our governor is well aware of the road deficiencies and the infrastructure deficiencies in the state of Michigan, and he's put... And he's put proposals together to increase road funding by one and a half billion dollars. There's been pushback from the Congress and from the Senate on that, and then there's a separate proposal for something in the neighborhood of half a billion dollars. Where that's all going to go is anyone's guess. Whatever that number is, if there is an increase in road funding based on a new model or an increase in a gas tax or whatever that is, what seems clear is that that increase is not going to go to local county roads in Hartland Township or anywhere else. It's going to go to our state highways, our interstates. You know, US 23 could see some of that, M-59 could see some of that.
But it's not...
But we're not, we're not going to, we're right, Livingston County isn't going to see it, you know, Hartland Road isn't going to see it.
Really?
That's...
I thought they would get a certain percentage of that increase.
From, again, it's still, it's still a moving target.
But it's not looking good though.
That's what we're seeing.
Okay. So there's going to, so we're paying the 19 cents a gallon, we're probably going to be picking it up someplace else on another fee or assessment. And then we're going to have an additional now per township to keep our roads in the shape. So it's, we're going to go from one tax basically to three.
And there, the roads need to be fixed, the funding has to come from someplace.
But I would think it would come from the state, work its way down to Livingston County, County would divvy it up by priorities, of course, and go from there.
And I don't disagree, the states, what the state, we're hearing is our priority is on the major thoroughfares, the state highways, the interstates. Those are in need of repair as well, and that's where all the traffic is, that's where that funding would go first.
I assume that would just filter its way down?
That's, we don't see it going that way, I can't predict, we don't see it going that way.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Dave, and just a further point on that, the one and a half billion with a B that the governor proposed was to keep the roads in the condition they're in right now. It was not to come up with great roads in Michigan. It was basically to maintain the standard of the roads as they are now, which of course didn't get any traction with the legislature. They basically, I don't know, in my opinion, ignored it and so it hasn't gone anywhere. There's this proposal for, as Dave said, half a billion that we may or may not ever see come out of Lansing.
It's a crisis nationwide, you know, the infrastructure that got built 30, 40, 50 years ago is crumbling. And whether it's roads, whether it's railroad tracks, whether it's subway tubes, whether it's power grids, it needs to be, it needs to be fixed and the funding isn't there.
Yeah, but like I said, it's the gas tax and it's maybe a $300 car for car fee and then it's going to be an additional one. And you know, I was hoping this world, maybe I did listen to gas tax.
Well, my name's Mike Alumbo, I live in Tri-Lakes as well, on private roads. And my question is, is, you put this up for vote, and if it fails, is there a Plan B?
The, so the township board has already done some measures to do what can be done out of the general fund, which is limited. And what we tell people is if you look on your tax bill and you look at where all that money's going, that small number at the bottom, that's what Hartland Township gets. So the township does not have, just like anyone else, does not have a huge pool of money with which to go out and do this ourselves. The township is putting some skin in the game with the extra road chloriding and some other measures. But whether there is a Plan B other than when the full plan speaks to other funding opportunities, those are potential Plan Bs, but they don't have the potential to raise the type of revenue that this millage would generate.
But if it doesn't pass, what's going to happen to the roads? I mean, is there a way that you can do a special assessment district for those areas that need it the most?
We would need, we would need the support of the folks who would find themselves in that special assessment district.
And they would vote on that?
They would have an opportunity to sign a petition and...
So that might be something that communicates people that that is an option.
It is, that's part of why we included it in the plan, we want people to be aware of that.
Plan B may be, may be an option, at least if there's a fallback for folks to get the roads fixed because as Dan had mentioned, that's what we have to do in our subdivision.
Yep, and I know it well. But as you can maybe appreciate, the same argument may come up when we, if we were to go out for special assessments as it would when we ask the voters for a millage. It is, why do I need to pay to fix the county's road? You know, it would be the same logic if the voters don't, don't support this millage. Those same voters probably wouldn't be favorable toward an SAD as well.
Yeah, unless it affects their roads.
Right.
You know, and which is fine, you know, of course it would cost them a little bit more money, but
Sure.
nonetheless, at least it's an option for them rather than saying that, you know, their roads aren't going to be fixed. At least they can, you can...
Yeah, there will be that option. I can, again, I can see resistance to that option as well.
Right.
You're asking for money to fix, to fix the county's road.
Yeah, all right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to back up a few other comments that I've heard tonight, and I'm very, very alarmed. It seems that we can't, up till now, we haven't been able to do much in terms of load, weight restrictions on the roads. And I'm deeply concerned by that, you know. A company like M-Bridge should be, they should be responsible for maintaining that road. I mean, there should be more, what can we as a township do to exert pressure to, to put some teeth into weight load restrictions? And there's a, I mean, otherwise, this is, this is going to be a lot of the time for naught. I mean, it's a deep concern, so what can we do?
So the, the weight limits say, like any law, it's only as good as the enforcement behind it, right? So the county does have Waymasters, but just like the road commission, their funding is limited as well and they can only be in so many places at once. The township does not have a police force, we do not have a Waymaster. One of the things that the task force considered as a potential other project to maybe dedicate some funds toward was potentially the township contributing to an enhanced Waymaster program. That was one of the considerations of the task force, and if we hear enough from folks like you that that should be back on the table, then we'll come back to the task force in June and take another look at that. But that would be what the township could do, is whether it's through this or if there were another funding mechanism. But one of the potentials is through this, if a road millage were to pass, to dedicate, allocate a certain percentage of that toward an enhanced weight enforcement program.
I know as a sidebar, I heard an NPR program not that long ago where the rate restrictions on our highways, the, what should I say, the tariff for the, if you, if you are caught overweight, it's laughably low in this state, and that's a separate issue, and I know it has to be addressed at the state level, but it's nevertheless also tearing up our roads.
My understanding has always been that Michigan does have some of the most lenient weight restrictions in the country. Part of that is the legacy of our industrial base and the industrial lobby and going to our state legislators and not pushing or encouraging our legislators to not have a more restrictive weight limit. And the result of that is overly heavy vehicles on our roads.
And thank you again for all the hard work, I know it. It's, it's, it's great to have this opportunity for input and it's a, it's a lot easier for me to sit in the audience and make remarks and criticisms, and I know there was a lot of energy and effort put in. And I appreciate that there'll be more opportunities for citizen input. I think this is, this is fabulous, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Couple of comments.
I have some, since it was a presentation to the planning commission also, although Keith, you were part, you're part of the task force. First of all, I want to thank the task force for all the effort that they put forth. As far as I understand, it's a volunteer task force, right? There's a lot of data here, right? So here's a book, so I thank whoever the task force is, because it just, it just means that we all care about where we live and it's why we're all here. So that's the real picture. Where I'd like to start off saying, I live on Pleasant Valley Road, off Pleasant Valley Road is north of Commerce. So I'm in that moon phase of Pleasant Valley Road where it goes through the curves and 19 and a half year resident with my family, three teenagers, actually one's in college. So I have young drivers on these roads, so it's a safety issue, right, for sure. I'm on a first-name basis with Wayne, the Livingston County Supervisor for our area, as are probably several of our neighbors. And he's a normal guy too, so I've had lots of conversations with him and I think was on his decent side to just communicate with him. But since last October, I think, the road wasn't touched until, I don't know, March or so. And then the frost set in right after October, and then it was just literally the worst I've seen in all those years. So we all have stories about how that works, right, or how bad the roads are. With my teen driver's safety, my story is, two years ago, my oldest was veering off of the road for emergency vehicle, leaving to make room for that ambulance and caught one of these pieces of missing concrete at the edge of the road where it turns to gravel, blew out a tire, bent a rim on the front wheel, luckily she wasn't hurt. So safety to me is the first thing, right? There's lots of reasons why we all want this, but safety is such a huge hitter to me. I think that both these should be separated from paths to roads. I just think that we probably have better success. Quite honestly there, I think paths are so vitally important, again, too, in high school, there's so much to do in Hartland. I want the kids to get around safely and there's, you know, whether it be the cross-country team, there's just, it's a great community and I think that'd be better if it was separated. But on the existing proposed pathways, I don't know if you can, well, maybe the maps here.
Is that I would like to see where, you know, the trail system right here, right, that terminates, somebody has a pointer, I don't know, but see where the trail system terminates right there. I would like to see that path, follow the south side of Dunham and connect, and or somehow maybe even go, you know, right now maybe it almost goes into the high school and then they can connect through the high school and come out where Oar Creek is. But that's, that's a great, you know, path for so many purposes. I'm a runner, so I would find myself using that a lot more, and I'm sure there's a lot of other folks that would. So there wasn't a lot of talk about paths, but that's something I'd like to see it maybe connect, you know. So right now it's dead-ended if you look at it. Now additionally, along the south side of Pleasant Valley Road, we have all these little pieces of paths. It'd be really nice if they were all connected, because right now, those are probably there when developments went in and they were required, you know, to
Sure.
sidewalk out front, so it would be nice to see those connected. I uniquely ran the shoulder of 59 the other day and it would just be nice if it was, you know, it'd be safer for, you know, bikers, for walkers, et cetera.
Sure, if I could speak to the Dunham Road pathway. So that was one of the potentials that the task force considered, was getting the connection at least from where the township's new pathway through Settlers Park, dead ends up here at Dunham Road. And make sure I have this right, and taking it all the way on the south side of Dunham to Hartland Road right here. It was, because of the grades through there and easement acquisition and a number of factors, that was a very expensive potential project. And so the task force had to take that into consideration when evaluating it against others. And for that reason among others, that's why, while we agree that would be a fantastic connection, just be based on the dollar figures, it didn't make the, it didn't make the cut.
Then if we could, and I understand the areas you're talking about, because it's wet on the north side of Dunham and then the acquisition in the south that I don't know, I'm not aware about. But then how about just connecting it from where it terminates now at Dunham, get it to the high school entrance by the Hartland High School sign?
Because that's, because that's the expensive part, is the answer. That said, again, feedback that the task force should hear. But yeah, through here, whether it's on the north side or the south side, the engineering behind getting that pathway through there turns it into an expensive project.
Even if it stays on the south side of Dunham?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you look at, you know, we have to look at communities...
Can I just, to that point you're talking about, I mean, this is, that connection you just mentioned to the school is part of the township's capital improvement plan that we all just rated different projects on. That was one of the items in that plan, and the board is in the, so it'd be on the north side of Dunham Road from the termination of this pathway over to the school driveway. So that's...
That's already in consideration in, in a different area, for a different...
Right, separate from the pathways plan.
And, you know, communities around us like Milford, if any folks, you know, you drive into Milford, the pathway on Commerce GM Road, yeah, where they have their park just east of, west of McDonald's, they have an above-ground area, it's beautiful, beautiful, right? Well, that ties into a big park, you know, that trail ties into the Kensington Trail, that ties into the South Lion Railroad Trail. So it's a different, you know, I don't know where that money came from, maybe there's lots of buckets of money out there to pull from that we don't have. But I just think pathways are really important, so that's an emphasis for me, and that's, that's good to hear, appreciate that. So a couple of other things, because I was, you know, planning commission wait till the public is done for the most part. So I was making a lot of notes and listening and I crossed some of my questions off. But on the, in the paperwork, if you can go to, if you would please, page 13. Again, my concern, I mean, I have concerns for all the roads, but living on Pleasant Valley Road, where it says right now, gravel road segment, it says Pleasant Valley, Lone Tree to Commerce. Now, maybe there was a little miss there, are we going to only go from Commerce to Lone Tree? Or are we going to go up to where the asphalt terminates just south of Giggler's Farm? Because that's a really low, wet area and that's about a quarter mile distance there.
I, I want to confirm that with you, but my understanding is Lone Tree is in there just for reference. But the idea would be to get it up to where Lone Tree, or excuse me, Pleasant Valley transitions from asphalt to gravel.
Can that be added, or, I'm a detail guy, I guess, and when I read it, I thought, oh, why would they leave that little segment out? Maybe I'm the only one that would see that, but there might be a way to wordsmith that in there to say to where the asphalt terminates. And it's good to know that that's the whole, the whole budget there, because it would be rather awkward to not. And that area is so low, and right now it's in really, really bad, right, mail carriers, real bad shape, that the side of the road swamp is somehow higher than the road, you know, it's really unique there. Okay, so let me see what else I have. Okay, Hartland does have a rush hour, right, all of a sudden, I've been here a long time. Leave at 5 o'clock and M-59, 23, I can't believe, you know, all the traffic from Clark Road right here going west. So we all have to deal with that. So any north-south roads and east-west roads that could be improved, in my opinion, to carry other traffic would be beneficial for the congestion that we see before the malls, you know, that all the properties develop. Because it's only going to get more difficult, I think. So that's a comment I wanted to make. Yeah, I agree that the grants naturally first before the vote, you know, any grants, and I think you probably addressed it, but to make a comment that grants should be looked at, obviously before the voters are asked to, you know, cast us to a vote for the millage.
Just to intercede quickly on that, in terms of the grants, most of them are matching funds. So that becomes part of the challenge of trying to go after a grant until you have funds to match the grant. Very, very few of the grants are 100%. They will kick in a certain amount if the township or the road commission kicks in a certain amount. So that becomes a challenge in being able to verify a grant.
And maybe that's noted, but that might be something good, because I did hear that at least once. Okay, I think that's it, that's it for me, thank you.
And if I may, just for the benefit of those of you in the audience, the planning commission is not going to take any formal action on this tonight. Again, they're, they're here for public input, just like you folks are. So don't, don't assume that we're about to approve this plan tonight or anything like that, that they're here for a town hall meeting just like you folks were. Yeah, we're just hosting it. Anybody else? Keith?
Sure.
The entrance to Hartland, on Hartland Road, if you pass the ball field from the middle school. What's going on with it, it's just a disaster, it just looks awful.
Uh, I'm sorry, tell me where again?
Hartland Road.
Whereabouts, you lost me. Hartland and Kraus?
By Line Garden too.
Right, yeah, no, I'm talking about, was it Springer Field or what used to be called Springer Field and the middle school.
It's my bridge, the fencing area.
On the road or in the park?
On Hartland Road.
Just, just north of the village?
North on Hartland Road, as you come into Village. At the bridge.
At the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a disaster. Last year it didn't get trimmed, it didn't get mowed.
Oh, the bridge itself?
Well, no, the whole sides of the road, nobody's maintaining it. It's, it has debris, it has now-bent fence. They did fix the pillar last year.
Yes.
Again, I'm seeing lack of maintenance at what we have.
Yep.
I don't know who's responsible for it, but...
Isn't it to the vegetation that's there?
Well, I mean, so it's kind of a, a work in progress kind of thing. So it used to be that the township maintained the portion that you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, then we came, we formed an agreement with HIA to maintain the ball fields at Springer Field. at Springer Field, and we continued to mow just that little part that you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
On the west side.
Okay.
Then, we said to HIA, you're doing this, why, you know, why are we sending, sending a guy down, another contractor down there to maintain a small portion of it? Can you guys just follow down and maintain that area when you're doing your maintenance on the rest? So, last year was kind of, you know, educational, you know, you're getting it, you didn't get it, you know, and tried to work through it, you need to do this, and, and so, it's, it's something we're aware of, and we're trying to work through it to get it taken care of the way it should be taken care of. The east side of the bridge area is the schools.
Okay.
So, they're the ones who maintain that.
Yeah, it is the schools out there on occasion, but like I said, this, last year, last summer, fall, and winter were just horrible. They didn't maintain it, either party didn't maintain it at all. I was very disappointed, and it is the entrance into Village. It's what I see in everybody that comes to Heartland Sees as they enter in, and I think it's important that we put that a little bit higher priority for at least general maintenance to keep it looking spiffy. But I see that HIA has improved their, their ball fields, it's looking very nice. They, they deal with kids. Why is there no sidewalk? Why were they allowed to do all these improvements and no sidewalk went in? Again, I see, and the Hero Center for the teenagers, I see the kids crossing the street like crazy, running across, and, you know, we're coming up there 40, 45 miles an hour, 30 if the light's flashing. But again, you know, teenagers, they don't, they think you're gonna stop. They don't care how fast you're going, but no sidewalks. Why is all this improvement going on, but yet no sidewalks are mandated for them to do these improvements as part of it? I just don't understand that.
The, some of the sidewalk gaps that you're speaking to are ones that are included in this, in this proposed improvement plan. So, we are aware of them, we, we do wanna get them done.
And I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just saying is that you had an opportunity, with these improvements they were doing with this ball field, to have it be a part of their improvement, instead of us paying for it.
They don't have the money, I mean, HIA is a volunteer organization.
Did you see the ball fields that they created out there?
Did they create where?
Aren't they the ones that made the, the great big ball fields out on 59?
No, that's, that's a township park.
That's the township park?
Yes.
That's even more disappointing. I'm all about parks, and I think they're wonderful, but we have a huge infrastructure here that is just crumbling, just crumbling, and I'm shocked to find out that all these parks are going in, but there's no pathway to get there. So, you drive your vehicle over the crummy road to get there, to take your bike out, to ride on a path that isn't even there anyways, because it was never completed.
So, what, are you referring to maybe like, maybe a path?
Just any of them. I mean, I took a walk the other day around the schools, and even the path that used to run down the river, the creek, used to be a beautiful path. You can't even get to it anymore.
So, one of the, I, I can speak to at least a pathway along M-59 to get to what, what we've turned, coined Heritage Park, on the north side of 59. At one point, the task force did consider a pathway on the north side of M-59, from right here at Clark Road, all the way out to Fenton Road, with the justification behind that, primarily getting the walkers, bikers to Heritage Park, and it would've created that connection, really, from, from Heritage Park all the way along the north side of M-59, back out to here, and then up through our park and into the village, and, and we really would've been establishing a, a nice, a nice network there. That said, to build a pathway from north side of 59, from Clark to Fenton Road was $600,000, is that what I remember? And, and the task force got to the point where they just, $600,000 in a pathway, they, they couldn't justify it relative to some of the other road projects.
I understand.
Again, tough decisions that had to be made to keep it within that one and a half mils.
I'll be honest, I would've voted it down, too, because we're not maintaining what we have. We are not maintaining what we have, and that's my complaint. I wanna see what we have, at least, be maintained, and then move forward. I am, I take care of my property, I make sure that my sidewalk is cleared and safe, but I can't walk one house over and safely walk on a sidewalk without paying attention to the road, the steps that I'm taking, because it's in such crappy shape, and the homeowner is not held accountable, the township's not held accountable, but when I trip and fall, I'm the one paying the medical bill. And that's the part that makes me angry. I want to see maintenance. I don't wanna see improvements, I wanna see what we have maintained first. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, anyone else, planning commission, public, anybody?
I'd like to say a couple of things, I've been quiet. First off, again, I really appreciate all that the task force has done. I mean, the list of all the meetings they've done, and all the data they've had to pull together, I want them to succeed in some way. I think we all want something to succeed. Also, tonight, I'm just so excited to see so much input, everybody coming, you know, like, I always feel everybody's ambivalent, they're home watching TV, they don't get involved. This was great to see. I agree, I mean, we need to push at all levels. We need to push for all the money we can, lobby where we can, and just keep moving forward, but meanwhile, we have to solve what we have today. I totally believe in your idea of maintaining what we have first. I maintain my property really well, too, you know, but it has to go beyond. Livingston County Road, I don't know, you know, I'm learning a lot tonight, but the part that has me a little bit unclear on is it's like, first off, they have so much money, and every year, they have that money, it sounds like not enough money, but now, if we start putting our money into this system, they still have that money that, I don't know if they're using that money then to engineer, or if they'll have money off now, a little bit on the side, as we're doing these things to improve the other roads. I'm not quite understanding their whole money structure, how that works, because I feel if we're improving these main areas, they should have some more money to give back to us, you know, I'm not getting that part.
And what they would say would be, their contribution is the engineering, and that's not, that's not peanuts. It's, you know, the engineering on these projects is a very significant cost, and what the road commission would say is, that is our contribution.
Is that taking away, then, from the maintenance of the other stuff, because they have this limited, here's their monies for the year, are they then pulling from that to provide the engineering for our projects?
That's not, I, I don't believe so. I mean, their, their maintenance, from a budgetary standpoint, their engineering is separate from their, from their maintenance funds. They've told us that, at least, as their engineering staffing is available now, they would have the engineering, the manpower, the hours available to do the designing and engineering on these projects. Now, that said, they have said that if Hamburg Township gets their millage approved, and if, if any other townships go for a millage and get those approved, they may find themselves overwhelmed with all these projects from, from these various townships that now have the millage funds available to do some of these projects. So, they've said, we're gonna do the engineering, as, as, we will do the engineering unless we get overwhelmed by various communities getting their millage.
Sure, so that's a different department, different set of monies, they've got maintenance money.
Now, we will, we will certainly ensure that we're still getting our fair share of what we would've gotten regardless. I mean, I understand the concern that if we, if we go and have this in our pocket, then they're gonna say, well, now we can go look toward another township, because Heartland Township has their own source of funding. That's not what's gonna happen here.
It just seems like we can't almost expect more, kinda now, we shored up these areas that have been maintenance nightmares, now they have a little more time and dollars to spend it in our other roads, because we've kinda fixed roads to a level.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, it makes sense, absolutely.
You know, and I know, earlier Larry was saying, you know, they promised, once we build them, they'll do, it almost sounded like a better job, but uh-uh, you know what I mean? I'm just trying to understand how we can keep the heat on them, and that really, when we give them a better, easier to maintain, and we expect, then those, that time and monies are gonna, you know, that could be another message that we could show, that there's some reason to sell our plan. And then I'm, my last comment is, I'm right with that same idea of separating the paths from the road. I really do think we're gonna have to separate, because it's different apples and oranges. I don't want one to take down the other. I do feel, again, I want the task force to succeed, I want all of us to succeed. I do believe it should be separate. Thank you.
I have to add my two cents.
As far as pathways and stuff, if you look at the demographics of people that went in here, they don't use pathways. They get careless about pathways. They don't ride bikes, they probably walk, some of them, but most of the demographics are older folks, they're not using bikes, they're not, they're not out there walking. I'm retired, you said, another 150 in taxes per thousand on my house, you're talking about?
Can I just correct the math real quick? If you're, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure we're clear.
No, I want it to be right.
Because 150 per thousand, that turns into a real big number. If your house is, the market value of your house is $200,000, which is the average house in Heartland Township, plus or minus, then the taxable value is half that, 100,000, and a one and a half mils would come out to $150 per year.
Okay, all right, then I was wrong, you're right. But, I'm retired, I don't have an extra $150 to give you guys, because then I have to cut something else out of my budget, which is either food, travel, any of that stuff. So, and again, back to the demographics, most of these people here are retired, they're on fixed income, they got no raises in the last 10 years. So, they don't have the money to cough up. So, that's all I got to say.
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, it makes two cents, no turkey. First of all, to address, Tom, in order to get a grant, you have to have a plan, and that's part of the reason the Safeway, roadway and Safeway path was put together, and then, of course, the money's needed as well, otherwise, you can't even talk grants. So, now, we're at least heading in a direction to where we can start thinking about grants, where we can start addressing them, requesting some of those from the state. It's already been talked about in the booklet here.
So, if they're sharing like that, actually, the number could be cut in half. If you had, if you got all the grants you wanted, and there's this certain number, and it was a 50% sharing, it could be in half.
Sure, yep.
Optimistic.
Mm-hmm. The other thing is, there's, more than one resident mentioned that, you know, I live on my road, my road's good or bad, whatever, but I'm, why would I pay for a road that I don't take in the village, or in, in the township? And wouldn't it be nice to have a community that you're proud of, and invite people from elsewhere into, and be able to travel the roads without being embarrassed by the roads that they have to travel on? And there's a lot of things, in the village, there's a library, there's schools, music hall, there are new parks, it'd be nice to have people that wanna go to, and there's other friends in the community that wanna visit their friend, and they have a nice road to get to it, so it's not, you know, I think the task force looked at it, it was just trying to make a better community, not, not just better roads. I mean, you have to have good roads, you have to have a nice, walkable community to make it, to improve the community. So, I mean, it was, and everybody's focusing on roads, and whether it's my road or not my road, but I thought the intent was, is to make it, take a broader picture, and be more proud of the village, more proud of the township, more proud of your community you live in, and make it more enjoyable to spend free time in, and not just to come home and go to bed in. So, I mean, that, that was kinda all I had to say.
Is there a comprehensive plan for the community? Is there a master plan in this town, and are some of these pathways part of that plan? At all? I'm just curious.
There, there is a comprehensive plan, and actually, the planning commission and staff are gonna be looking at doing some updates to that currently, in the, in the coming months. The township, the last time we did a, a new comprehensive plan was 2004, there was an update in 2011, and now we're looking to do an update here, 2014, 2015. There is, not within that plan document, but there is a pathway plan that our engineer worked with us on a few years back, that was never specifically adopted into the comprehensive plan, but that pathway plan does exist, and that's where a lot of these pathway segments that are on, that are proposed here originated from.
I was just asking you, because it might, it seems like that, a comprehensive plan is sort of a basis also for funding requests, right? And then, do funding requests more favorably or strongly considered when a community has a comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Which is great.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, geez, I lost my train of thought. I was gonna follow up with something really enlightening, and then, it was gonna be the first time in a while, so. It's getting late, I guess.
Well, thank you.
My name is Gary Corneo. Been a citizen of Heartland for long enough, also a member of the task force. I would just like to address, and I took notes tonight, appreciate your comments, Keith, your comments, Tom. Little concern, I was asked to participate, I think primarily because of my interest, particularly in the village, the sidewalks, i.e. pathways, and many of you, if not all of you, have heard me address this issue before, about safety in the village. I have some concern about this idea of separating the two, so that I think that many of the folks, and I understand the points they have and the concerns they have, is the separation might have been, let's get rid of that, we, just like the last gentleman said, you know, we don't need sidewalks and so forth, and we have a safety issue, the sidewalks are adjacent to the road, so they are related to one another very closely. I don't see them as two separate, separate issues. And safety, particularly of our young citizens, which I see in my location in the village, especially with the schools, with children of preschool age, all the way up to teenagers, not necessarily showing any lesser or greater capability to anticipate problems, depending on age, but they're all subject to a very large chance of physical harm, particularly in the village, because of the adjacency of the roads, and the number, just sheer number of children, and more and more, as I've seen in the 10 years I've owned the building there, just pedestrians walking in the village. So, it's an issue that I hope doesn't get thrown off, or, and I, I think the two are related, I don't think, you know, even if it's the pathways that would pass, and the roads that would fail, I don't think that's right either, even though my interest, very frankly, has been pathways, I travel primarily on roads that, that aren't on this list. But I think the two have to be looked at, it's a way of getting across, and I agree with Keith's comments, it has to do with the community, and sometimes, it's not just what's best for me, but what is the right thing to do, and I think we have to make that, you know, that clear to our citizens, that it isn't always about what do I get from it, but, you know, what are my responsibilities as a citizen and as an adult? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I could, just one last time, I do wanna thank everybody who came out, and especially those of you who stayed to the bitter end. You know, everyone, everyone in this room is a resident of this township, and everyone in this room pays taxes to this township, and everyone in this room would be subject to this village, so, or to this millage, if we get to that point. So, we do, I don't wanna sound sappy, but we really all are on the same team here. This is the township and the task force attempt to try and to find a solution, whether or not we all agree on whether this is the best solution, we're all trying to get to the same point, which is, we recognize that these, that these roads and these pathways need some attention, this is one, one way of going about doing it. Ultimately, the voters are gonna decide in November, what we wanna ensure as a staff and as a task force, is that the, the plan that ultimately goes to those voters in November is the best plan that we can possibly put together, and, and the plan that serves this community with, to the extent possible. And as I mentioned, we would love to be able to fix every road in the township, but then we would be asking for an incredible millage rate, and so, the task force had to make these hard decisions about what roads to include and which ones not to. And so, again, your, your comments are being heard, they're being noted, they're being recorded, the task force, the township board, the planning commission are hearing them, and they will be taken under a very close consideration as we look at making revisions to this plan, so we really do appreciate it.
I have one last question, and I'll shut up. The development that you're all speaking of, that's the one that is adjacent to Meyer, because they have, right, we talked about that square?
So, that's all part of one plan development, Meyer's the anchor, there's a whole lot left to be built.
Yeah. If that business comes...
If that business comes in, you know, in that what is now vacant flat near Towne Square, is there a leverage that the township can apply to have them fund incoming business, help fund some of the pathways that are adjacent to it?
So, so that project really already has done that. They already in place, they moved Heartland Road, they put in a whole lot of water and sewer, they contributed to the boulevard of M-59, they put pathways along their frontage and along Heartland Road. They've essentially done, you know, kind of above and beyond what they have contributed to this point. That said, as new developments come in along the vacant properties, along M-59 and elsewhere, and as those plans come before this planning commission, this planning commission has the discretion to require those developments to put in pathways, sidewalks along their frontage. They can, and they do. For example, we just had along M-59, a new veterinary clinic was, was approved at this planning commission two weeks ago, on the south side of M-59, and they have to put in sidewalk along their frontage. Now, granted, you get kind of these gaps there, you get kind of a patchwork, but the hope is eventually, those connections get made. Part of what this plan is, is making some of those connections, so that we don't have these gaps and these pathways with dead ends along them. So, we are, as best we can, we are trying to get the developers to do it, it's just the development has obviously slowed over the last six, seven years. You're welcome.
I just had one thing I wanted to say. So, I've been on the board now for ten years, and the, the one thing that I, I say has been a constant through those ten years, is the citizens' concern over the condition of the roads. We have lobbied with the Livingston County Road Commission. We're constantly talking to people at the county, trying to advocate for our citizens. What I see happen is that most of the road commission's money follows the population within the county. It ends up being centered along Grand River, and in Brighton, Genoa Township, they put a lot of dollars towards the Latson Road interchange. So, you know, as Dave spoke of earlier, we did a survey a year ago, again, it came back from our citizens that they're concerned about the conditions of the roads. We put a plan together back in 2010 to take to the voters that was turned down. I'm, I'm very proud of the job that the committee has done. I think they've really developed a plan that is the citizens' plan. It isn't the planning commission's plan, it isn't the board's plan, it's a plan that reflects the will of the citizens. Certainly, they had to evaluate things and make tough decisions. If, I wasn't on that committee, but I would say that if any of you were sitting on that committee, you would've had to make those tough decisions too. And, it isn't all about where they live, it isn't all about where you live. I mean, I hesitated even saying anything after the way Keith put it, because he did do an excellent job in, in stating what they tried to do. A community is more than just the road in front of your house. There's, you know, as, as we as planners, you know, try to keep ourselves educated on things that are happening in the planning community, one thing that I, I remember hearing, that you can directly correlate a walkable community to increased property values. So, I would think that that's something that would benefit everybody that was in this room, is increased property values. And now, I know there's taxes and go with increased property values, I understand, but we all someday would like to sell our houses for more than we bought them for. But, like I say, it's a, been a constant, well, not constant, but a common sentiment of the voters to the condition of the roads. And, we put a plan forward, it'll be up to the citizens to decide on what they want to do on it, but I am very proud that we, that the task force developed a plan that I think is the citizens' plan, not the township's plan. So, I want to thank them for all their work.
Okay, great, thank you. Now, there are, are there still a couple meetings coming up real quick here that are on this calendar I have?
There are, and if you, I want to get, if you allow me, I want to put it up on my screen, it's just gonna take me twenty seconds to get to it here. But yes, we are having a meeting at, and Colleen may know some of these off the top of her head, as I'm looking for this schedule, but there's a meeting at Kahuna Coffee, there's a meeting at Big B Coffee. If any of you are within, members of homeowners association, would like us to come to a homeowners association meeting and talk this through, we are, we are doing that, and we will take you up on your invitation. So, again, I can't say it enough, we really want as much public input as we can. Public input schedule. So, we are here. May eighth, planning commission meeting on the subject. Big B Coffee on May thirteenth, Kahuna Coffee on May fifteenth. We're gonna have a tent at the Memorial Day festivities, where among, you know, we're gonna have a township tent, and this is gonna be one of the things that we're there to talk about, but we can certainly talk about anything that the citizens of our township want to discuss at our, at our tent. And, again, a lot of homeowners association meetings in there as well, and this is a tentative schedule, but the, one of the key dates is coming back to the task force. Here it says June second, I think we're actually looking toward June fourth, but regardless, early June, we're gonna take all this public input back to the citizen task force, and say, "Here's what we're hearing, what changes should we be thinking about making to this?" Again, so that we can put together the best plan we can.
Okay, so plenty of time to say something.
Absolutely.
There are many opportunities.
And if, again, if any of you are involved in any groups that would want us to come out, would have us for fifteen minutes as part of a meeting or something like that, let us know, let Colleen know, let myself know, and we'll make it happen. We want to get the word out.
Okay. I guess we'll move on to item nine. Anybody have any comments they'd like to say? All right, we'll move on to item ten, planners report. Dave, did you have anything else tonight?
If I can have just a couple more minutes, just real quick, to give you some updates on some things. Taco Bell, we stamped their approved plans, they came and picked them up, they're off to Livingston County to pick up their building permits, and soil erosion permits, everything else they need from Livingston County, and then they'll be back here for a pre-construction meeting, hopefully in the very near future. Today, we had the fifth of our five major developers' meetings. Today was with the Ramco Gershenson Group, and we talked about what they see as being the future of that plan development. Myself and the township manager have had a couple meetings this week with some parties that are interested in possibly acquiring our sewer properties along M-59. Both groups seem very interested, and want to go back and crunch some numbers and come back to us, and hopefully something positive will come of those. We're hoping to have a meeting with the ordinance review committee prior to the May twenty-second meeting of the planning commission, so the ORC subcommittee would hopefully meet at five, five-thirty, prior to our meeting of the full planning commission. The planning staff and some members of our planning commission are gonna have a concept meeting next week with one of our industrial users who's looking to do an expansion, they're still trying to maybe not disclose too much, so more to come on that. And, for those of you who weren't able to come to our public input workshop on the prospective sign amendments, we had that workshop the morning of Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, rainy morning, which may have lessened our attendance, but I'd like to think a productive meeting, and we heard some really good feedback on that, feedback that planning staff, the ordinance review committee, the planning commission, and the township board ultimately can take under advisement, as we're looking at making some amendments to regulations of our, the signed regulations of our zoning ordinance. And last but not least, there's a box sitting at Colleen's feet of the most up-to-date zoning ordinance that incorporates the thirty-something changes that this planning commission worked very hard on last year. They are full copies of the plan, we just thought there was too many changes to try to do the insert pages, that would've just been cumbersome. So, I think I've got seven left in the box, you're welcome to take one, if any of you prefer the digital version and don't want a hard copy, that's up to you, but we do have the hard copies here, and now's as good a time as any to hand those out. And it is available on our website as well, so if any of you folks feel like reading a zoning ordinance, it's on our website. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Committee reports, anyone? Anything?
We'll try to.
Need a second.
Report.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those may motion carries, thank you.